We have 3D printing going on in two areas. One is the robotics, kind of a newer option for students at Garden City High School. And Mr. Diller is involved more in the technical drafting side. The picture on the right is the 3D printer down in his area. So he's just gonna give you some insight on how that's going.
3D printing is an emerging technology. My kids come in and they're telling me every day, "Have you seen what they're printing now?" And that's the day when I was looking, they were printing wings from airplanes. They were printing the eyes that went on them so they could test them. So they're printing liquid metal now, they're printing body parts, they're printing skin. And it's an exploration is what I do with my technical students. I always make them draw one 3D object that they draw it and then they have to print it. The particular object, I make them draw, hold up my toes, is a set of dice. And this is the kind of quality that they get when they print it out. Grab that dice and just break it off, it'll come off. It's just got a platform under it, it prints it. And I make every student that I have as a technical grafting, print one of those sets of dice. After they do that, then I give them the option to print something of their choice. So I get a lot of car logos, I get a lot of Fords and Chevys. I get a lot of athletic symbols and sports teams and things like that. I always think that it sounds kind of pointless to print little trinkets like that. But then later on, my students come in and they have something bigger and something better that they want to do. One of my seniors last year printed a mechanical hand, a stasis. So he was just wanting to do something for a buff project. He was interested in some jeans classes. So he printed a prosthetic hand that you could move and that would close and grasp. So had one student printed a ukulele last year. So had one student that this year him and his dad decided to build their own printer at home, so he just got that completed and brought in his first print. And I think it's kind of pointless as a teacher, sometimes you say, "Well, is it really worth it?" And one of my students that I taught in '07 emailed me last year and now he's an industrial designer. And he said, "As a sophomore, that was the only year I taught him." And I gave him that interest, so. So 3D printing is the future and the kids love it and they're using it full-time. I have two of them that Deb helped me buy, so.
Do you feel like you're there just to set the guidelines on extremes from here to here and you let them go?
Yeah, that's what I do pretty much. And being sophomores, they haven't had a lot of time on my software. So a lot of times it's like, "This is what I want and I have to show them how to get there to get it," so.
I think this probably shows because of the technology that's coming out of our students. And the iPad, um, different stuff, it's really a very nice technology to have personally.
And I've had these since 2014, so this is like my second full year with them. And they're getting outdated, but I'm sure someone will take them and I can decide to replace them. Jane was talking to me this morning about doing something with her class where we make maybe a set of teeth or something like that that she could use in her class.
Eyes are cooler than teeth.
Thank you.
And I guess to switch to the other side, I'm glad public services doing the food and agriculture is part of their focus because we're all gonna eat and we're all gonna have to mow our grass. And so to give you a quick rundown, I guess I'm down in power mechanics. I just want to give you a quick update how we're enhancing it and expanding it a little bit. Pretty much our industry involvement has been through Foley Equipment, came to visit us, Foley Equipment, American Implement, I had a great slide and I forgot. American Implement and LDI, Lane Diesel. Basically, industry input came and told us that the whole industry has changed. It used to be they worked on things that were broken. But now 80% of that industry is involved with preventive maintenance. And so we kind of changed our curriculum. We used to always just do, basically break down an engine, put it back together, go through that mechanics. But since that's only 20% of what industry is actually doing, we changed up and provided a service to our community in the fact that we do lawn mower maintenance. We have the students, after they go through the basics on preventive maintenance, actually go through and bring in live work. A great way that the iPad has enhanced that is number one, for ESL students and one thing and another, so much more visual. They take photographs of the steps, arrange those steps in order, pick through, work through how to get it, fix it. And then what happens usually is that a lot of the lawn boards, they really don't work the way they do in a real classroom. What I mean, you can lay out your lesson, but then somebody's gonna bring in one that's all messed up. My wife works with adults with disabilities and so we have a community service project. We brought in all their mowers and worked all the way through them. And when we got through those, we went ahead and opened it up and brought our teachers, had brought in some lawn mowers that we worked through. And you really need to pay your teachers more because they had worse lawn mowers than that. Well, what we're able to do with the iPads is film each operation when they ran into a problem. You know, different things, we're able to do that and then project that on screen and talk through it as a group, as opposed to just having that one student learn on each individual one. And I guess with all those links through LDI, Foley Equipment and American Implement, one of the biggest things they did was they understand that technicians need to have, mechanics need to have post-secondary education. And so they're linked with Surir County Community College and every other colleges around the area. So them coming in, providing that input to the students that they needed to do something after school. American Implement, I believe, has four openings that they provide to the Garden City Community College John Deere program. So it's a great link to the way that industry is changing and the way that we're linking to post-secondary education for all those students in our district that want to go on and become mechanics. And we have a lot of those in our academies. Surir County Community College recently just donated two car engines and one diesel engine to once again provide that link. Small engine is a lot cheaper to basically take apart and lose parts than a car engine. And so Surir County provided us three engines that students, after they go through the small engines, are having that connection to gasoline engines and also diesel truck engines, so thank you. Any questions, I guess, as we sneak that way?
All right. So you can see at Garden City High School, we've always got something new, something different, something we're trying to do that kind of pushes instruction, just pushes it forward so kids get new experiences. A lot of what you've seen today, we weren't doing just a couple of years ago. And we keep trying to operate that way, is find some new ways to challenge kids, give teachers the freedom to innovate and to try something different, try something new. We're excited about some things we're gonna be able to report to you next year. Two classes that have been approved, material science course, kind of a combination between our building trades and welding and a science classes, so material science, and then advanced engineering, the next step from a robotics class, taking it a step further for kids. So we're always looking for ways to serve and always looking for ways to innovate. Any questions?
Well, I'd just like to say, I'm really impressed with the broad range of kind of career interests and things that these students are exposed to. If there is anything that a student becomes motivated for, it's getting that little spark for what they eventually want to do, just like women, they tell them, say, you know, that they can be a designer by just a little exposure. And I see that a lot in other fields where somebody's career was really generated when they were a student or just had maybe a conversation or a small exposure early on in that class. This is really wonderful and you all are doing a great job of it. And I would also like to say, Deb, we are gonna miss you. And I think that you have, you've been so positive with the students and you've really encouraged them to take up, you know, an interest in their future and their career. It ties in a lot because it had been the reality presentation that we had. And just that little exposure, you know, how much a child could cost to make a, someone make a different decision in the future. So all these little things combined have really improved lives for our students and I think you all are doing a great job of it. Thank you, Deb, for your question.
I just work with great people.
Great, great staff.
And several didn't, a couple, I guess, that are here did present, but were. Justin Wells on Slide LaDak and does an awesome job. Boris, another high school staff, yes, also contributing, Sirsek and Sminkley. Everybody pulling together, things happen.
I was gonna hold this story till the good welfare portion of the meeting, but it seems very fitting to discuss it right now. My husband and I just went to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina for some continuing educations last week. And while we were there, we met up with our best friends, Kent and Shay Sinclair, who a lot of you know, and recently moved to Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. And while we were having dinner with them, Shay explained her new career. And she worked with the Chamber of Commerce and they developed this position for her. And if you know Shay, you're not surprised that they would develop a position for her. But her job is to help coordinate a work-study program with high school students so that the major manufacturers, specifically Boeing and Volvo, they need high skilled workers, right? They don't need a four-year college degree, they need high skilled workers and good employees. So her job is to connect a developer program to get these kids career-ready from high school, which is exactly what we're doing right here in the middle of the Midwest. So I told her if she didn't have a name for it, she should consider Bridges if you have patented or ready. So it made me feel very proud to sit there and explain to her and remind her that that's what this academy program was all about. This is why we got behind this program. We built a building around this program and it's for the benefit of the kids and the young adults of our country, basically. So anyway, Deb, I just wanted to echo what Jane said, that your efforts have not gone unnoticed and you will be definitely missed.
Yeah, I agree with what you said. We hear so much about college and career-ready, but in the end, we hope every one of our kids go to work. So it's career-ready for everybody and having the skills to be successful beyond where your education may take you.
And life-ready.
Life-ready.
You've gotta have all of those skills.
I have a question, because in looking at all the different academies, I would wanna do a little bit of everything.
A little bit of everything. We have kids that do.
Do you, okay, that's what I was gonna ask. As freshmen, are they able to choose and do they stick with that or do you find that a lot of the kids transition, like what percentage do you say?
Not very many kids transition through, but we open them to be able to take electives in all different academies. And so you, and with our graduation requirements, you get a little bit of everything. As the principal of arts and communications for a few years, I kind of, in the high school, everybody wears the different colored IDs, but everyone ends up in arts and communications sooner or later because of all the electives housed there. It's kind of the United Nations of our high school. Everybody's there, all together, all academies. And so we do, you know, we do by our setup, allow kids to be, you know, take things based on their interest, whether it's a foreign language or whether it's a business class. You know, even if a student is in a trades academy and thinks, "I'm going straight to work and I wanna own my own business and I wanna do this." Well, we can encourage them to, you might wanna take an accounting class to try to figure out how to keep track of your money and your income when you open your own little business, so.
I can answer a little bit more. We have about 40% of our students complete a pathway, which means three credits. Not quite, it varies every year depending on if the students wanna complete a pathway or just take a few. But a lot of the pathways cross over, so they might take courses in three or four or five pathways, but they will still sometimes complete a pathway because of that interest. They may want that loading certificate or they may wanna complete and get their CNA. But they've also dabbled in maybe broadcasting as well and maybe culinary, so they've tried several things. So we have about 35 to 40% of our students that will complete that house.
It's a great high school to try out different careers.
So thank you for your support for all, all that we're doing. We can't do some of the things that we do without, as you mentioned, the facility and the community support and all those things that lent to our success. So thank you for the opportunity.
At this point, it looks like it's a new, unfinished business. This area was planned to be discussed. Just to see if we have any additional questions from my presentation.
Is there a motion to approve the math curriculum? I mean, we approved the math curriculum for grade seven through nine, asked for the last board meeting, whatever you saw. Any further discussion? Oh, is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor of this version? Any of those? The bill is approved. Moving on to the school calendar for the 2016, 2017 school year.
Last meeting, I believe, we forwarded the recommendation of the calendars made to the board. And this would be another one that was put after the first meeting. It's for you to make any consideration for an option for the calendar for the 2016, 2017 school year.
Is there a motion to approve the school calendar for the 2016, 2017 school year?
Madam President, we approve the school calendar for the 2016, 2017 school year that was presented at our last school board meeting.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam President. The telegram did a great article in paper following the last board meeting. It's doing a very good job explaining my frustration with how the vote had been so close the year prior and we had gotten such a discrepancy than those current year from the teacher vote. And I have gotten a lot of feedback from that. Plus, I had asked a lot of people what their opinions were, because I really feel like we need to do diligence and figure out, you know, where we slid from and what changed. And I've got a lot of really good, candid responses, a lot of honest opinions, concerns. But I wanted to share the four biggest comments that I had gotten. And I also was interested in hearing from the other board members if they had received any other feedback similar to this or otherwise. The first comment was, "There's lots of change going on right now. We just approved a seven-period date by high school and teachers want time to get their arms around that and adjust to that first." And the talk of transportation change with getting all the elementary schools on the same schedule. A lot of people felt like that was more connected to the calendar than what administration felt like it was connected, which is, you know, I don't know if it is or not, but that was a concern which is valid. I was at several staff meetings with Dr. Carlin, who explained that they weren't ever connected at all. The new transportation director had this idea, we're in line with it, but as of right now, there isn't any change. Yeah, okay. So, but that was another item on people's hearts. The second most common comment was childcare concerns with the late start or early dismissal, what was gonna happen with not only the teachers' children that needed to be transferred, but the community's children that may or may not be last piqued for a few more hours that week, which again, I think is a valid concern. The third concern that I received and has concerned me the most, and this comment, this specific comment, kind of wraps up a lot of comments that I heard, probably at least a dozen comments of this nature, but this is what I'm gonna, in quotation, say, "There was biased and negative and selfish comments immediately prior to the vote with no mention of any benefits at all to the alternative calendar." So again, that has me concerned on, you know, why that campaign happened right at the time of the vote. But again, teachers voted the way they wanted to vote, so I guess at the end of the day, the teacher votes what really counts the most. The other comment that was made is that Mr. Hogan didn't get out the alternative calendar for review early enough. And I want everyone to know that that was beyond his control and that there was nothing he could do to get that out earlier. And that was without going over the line on what I can discuss in this meeting, just believe that that was out of his control. So with all those items or those comments being discussed, I feel that there are a lot of things that could have been done differently with the vote. But at the end of the day, we are at a deadline with having to help administration by giving them a calendar to work with. And so although I feel that things probably occurred inappropriately at times during this process, specifically right before the vote, the teacher's vote is what it is. And I am going to vote in favor of the teacher's vote for maintaining the traditional calendar. But I am in strong question of whether or not that's in the best interest of our students and our community.
Is there any other comment?
I just have a quick one. It's a little, it's not really the same line that, and maybe a little bit of a question. My concern is that I always feel like the school starts earlier and I know that each year and I know that kind of falls in line with where the dates are and when the first is about this. But I guess my question is, what are our teachers' thoughts on that or if that's any other concern? One of the concerns I've had with that is how hot it is on the buses. And I feel like we start earlier than other area schools, so I guess I was curious about the thought of the reasoning for why we start that early?
It's been through that survey process that we used to gather from our staff. And one of the questions is start time and Memorial Day and two boundaries, if you will. And so that's just been in from our staff for that survey collection, is what our start time is.
Has it been looked into at all about, I guess, temperature-wise, the cost of running the air conditioners that early, you know, if that's, if that is an issue at all? And also the busing. I know a lot of kids are in camp, but we're country folks, so I hear from that side of where they're, they're on the bus for an hour after the day in the heat and in that kind of situation. So I just wanted to put that out there so people were aware of that was one of my concerns. And I guess where does it fall with other schools in the area that don't start as early as us? Is there?
We do invite superintendent to hold them to sit on that committee as well. Obviously, the GBO doesn't have bus H kids, but they're invited to try to align our calendars and make that going on. So we are trying to get some input from some different areas.
That was a privy to conversations this year, but in the past, when I've been involved with the calendar committee, one of the priorities that would recur was trying to keep the two semesters of relatively equal length. And if you'll notice in this proposed calendar for next year, students are done a full week before Memorial Day. And so one of the options the calendar committee certainly could have proposed was essentially shifting everything forward a week. But that would have then added five days to the second semester and taken five days out of the first semester, so a net change in the length of these semesters of 10 days. So I've always been said, I think, being on the calendar committee might be one of the most difficult assignments. And when you sign up for the next year, forget that I said that, okay? But there's never a perfect calendar. But Jennifer, I think your comment about the temperature on the buses, I don't know that that's ever been something that's been discussed in the calendar committee. And so that might be some information that could kind of give them a little different perspective, so.
I'd like to go back and add a positive comment since these sounded kind of negative. But one really great thing that has come from this is communication and collaboration. We have, this has been a great example of talking, listening, massaging things, one if thing things. And we ended up with two products that were the best possible products that the people involved with this responsibility were able to create. So no matter how this ends up, if you know somebody on the committee, you owe them a thank you for their time and their effort. I mean, it's an emotional, it's an emotional objective to achieve. And if we didn't care, we wouldn't put so much into it. So I did wanna say something positive, so.
And I would agree with the calendar committee, the efforts that they put in and always handled very professionally in those meetings, you know, everybody's open-minded, there was no bad ideas. There's a lot that goes into it. And we start talking about testing windows, the state assessment when those start and balancing semesters and all those kinds of things come into play. It's, there's a lot that goes into it.
Let's just do all your school. Is there any other?
I do have a question. Do school schedules at the high school level have any impact on the school calendar? Do you just find how the, you know, the first names, like who's sick after they start school and every kind of that was ever a factor?
We really didn't discuss activity schedules from this year when we're looking at those dates. Like I said, mostly we came back from staff about their preference for start time, but that wasn't really one of the factors that we looked at.
Because it seems like whatever it is at high school level is what drives the level of grades, because they shouldn't be.
And that may have been a factor in staff's responses when we start talking about the alternative calendar, you know, choosing a Wednesday versus Friday, those kinds of things, activity schedules. I mean, that was probably part of the decision-making then, but not in terms of start time necessarily.
I think it's pretty important that we try to get a school calendar for next year settled as soon as possible. I know the staff is dependent on making arrangements for that as well as the community, because I think parents and the community in general needs to have some planning time for the things that they have to do too. So is there any further discussion?
I have just one question, I guess. You know, last year, after the vote, the calendar committee gathered again and tried to figure out why the vote turned out the way it did. I guess my question is, is that planned for this year? It seemed like there was a lot of comments that Dr. Gloria gathered of a lot of negative. I think it's important that we see those negative comments, why those negative comments happen. You know, maybe the traditional calendar is what they all want, but we need to figure out, you know, what do they want? You know, one year it was so close and the next year it was so far away. You know, instead of having all these processes in place and spending all these people's time on meetings, you know, let's figure out what we really want. And if that's what we really want, then, okay, that's what we're gonna keep doing for the next five years. At least that's what I would like to see happen. I mean, we did that last year to find out why the vote turned out the way it did. I think we should do it again this year. I mean, it's no different from the close vote or a far away vote, what happened. And, you know, I'm good with however the teacher voted, you know, it's their vote. But if there was some negative themes going on, I'd like to know why the vote was going on.
And Tim, I think the reason why I had the negative comments is because I opened myself up to that because of the last meeting and how the article in paper came out. It was, I'm frustrated with the slide in a different direction from where we had previously been going. So people were explaining to me why they thought this slide happened. So people were explaining to me why they thought this slide happened.
Oh, I'm glad they did.
Yeah, I am too, but I think that's why I specifically got these comments instead of why they were in favor of the traditional calendar.
Sure.
So again, it's like how you ask the question. It depends on how you're going to get the answer and, and the bottom line.
I agree with you.
Yeah. The bottom line is we just want to do what teachers need. We got to support our teachers. And the teachers voted for the traditional calendar, so we're going to most likely support it and get on the, get on the stick. But originally, the way this, this whole process started was a group of great teachers came and said, hey, I want collaboration time with my colleagues. And we thought, wow, that's awesome, let's see what we can do. So I don't want to forget about that.
Yeah. And I think it's important that the schools are really doing well with that and they're kind of, they get into why they're doing so well with it. And it might be because they have coaches in their schools. I don't know, I'm not an expert at that, but we need to really try to figure those things out, I think. And we have a year to do, so.
We probably will be forming a calendar committee together again and just seeing what the plan is for whether or not we can do a survey at that point. I mean, that's going to be a committee decision if they want to survey the staff at this point, if that's playing the groundwork for next year or if they want to pave the way and then start with that next year in terms of going with whatever calendars they determine.
Well, I strongly echo what Tim said. If you want to pass at least what we, our opinion is to your committee, I think if you don't get feedback, I don't think you're, you're doing any diligence for what the teachers need. So maybe they've decided the majority doesn't, they feel the PLC time's something to really bite and claw and scratch for. You know, we, every, every faculty meeting, there's a complaint, there's not enough minutes in the day. So I get it, I totally get it. If we could add minutes to the day and pay teachers accordingly and add time to do female seats and pay for the time, that would be awesome. But we don't live in Dr. Carlin land right now.
Wow. Any further comments? At this point, we've had a motion seconded. All in favor of approving this school calendar for the 2016-2017 school year that was presented? Please raise your hand. Any opposing side? And respond to the bond finance resolution?